Good evening and welcome to the Board of Suckman's meeting, Town of Rockland, April 21st, 2020. Please direct your attention to Suckman Vice Chairman Larry Ryan for the Pledgeable Allegiance. Larry?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to which it stands, one nation, undergone indivisible propriety and justice for all.
Thank you. Evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online, video, on-demand at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Before we get started, I just want to read a letter that we received from the First Congregational Church of Rockland. Their pastor Reverend Al Copeton has died from complications of COPD, and they asked me to read a letter on his behalf, on their behalf. It is with great sadness that the members of the First Congregational Church of Rockland announced that our pastor for 15 years, Reverend Alan Copeton, has died from complications from COPD. He tested negative for the coronavirus and had been well cared for at Social Hospital. Reverend Alan became an ordained minister of the United Church of Christ in 1972. He served as a pastor for over 50 years, including the First Congregational Church in Happyville Mass., Smith Memorial Congregational Church in Hillsborough, New Hampshire, Second Congregational Church in Palmer Mass., the First Trinitarian Church in Situate, First Trinity Church in Situate, and finally, the First Congregational Church in Rockland. He was a very active member of the Lions Club for over 30 years. He was recipient of the Melvin Jones Fellow Award and was awarded honorary lifetime members from the North River Lions Club. Reverend Alan was quite respected by our previous partner church, Anchor Christian Church. While sharing our building, they made great contributions to our existence. Bishop Carl Philip Coato was honored to receive a check of five thou- for $1,000 raised by a membership in honor of Reverend Alan's 70th birthday. The money was used to fund a community building on the college campus of Anchor Church in Kenya. The Copeton main house in Quail College contains a small library lounge, a kitchen, it hosts 30 students and several staff members. This is a difficult loss for our church family. Alan has been a manager, preacher, spiritual advisor for many years. We attribute our existence and knowledge to him and are grateful for his leadership and inspiration. He has been a true contributor to the town of Rockland. The church members appreciate the outpouring of sympathy from members of the community. We especially thank Father James Hickey of Holy Family Church in Rockland, and Reverend Christie Colburn of the Avenue United Church of Christ for their comfort and support. At this time, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for Reverend Alan. Thank you. Okay, under community announcements, Doug, anything?
I do. I have two things. I'm going to start with what I think will be the lightest comment of the evening, which comes from the town clerk, Donna Shortall. The top dog contest winner, for all those that, for you have been waiting, is Kiki, who's the top vote getter this year. And Kiki is a teacup chihuahua and is the furry companion of Cheryl Webb. And I also wanted to highlight to folks that if you go to the homepage of the sandwich, excuse me, the homepage of the Rockland, sorry, Rockland website, www.rockland-ma.gov, under news, there's an actual video slideshow of all the dogs that were entered. So we wanted to wish congratulations to the winner, Kiki. So that was, I think, probably the best news we'll be able to give tonight. On a much more somber note, the other community announcement I wanted to make is that we've been speaking very closely with our Veterans Agent, Vinnie Fontaine, and unfortunately, based on Vinnie and my and all the other input we've gotten, we feel that we're going to need to cancel this year's Memorial Day Parade. It just does not seem like the safe thing to do. We wanted to give ample notice to the community. So I'm just making that announcement tonight, but our plan is that Vinnie will come into one of your meetings in May, either the first meeting or the second meeting, to talk about some ideas he has, to put some videos of prior parades up on local cable access TV, so that the whole community can still observe it on the actual day. But just given the history of what's happened with parades in the past and pandemics, we just want to get out in front of it. So I wanted to make that announcement, and that's all I had.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda, open session minutes, April 7th, 2020. I want to take a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Ryan. Larry?
Yes.
Mr. Mullin? Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me. That's unanimous. Next on the agenda, new business, Children's Mental Health Week proclamation, May 3rd through 9th, and update on Rockland Youth Commission activities. Jean Blaney, you with us?
I am. So, thank you for having me. I know that your meetings have been lengthy, so I'll try to keep this as short as possible. So, this evening I came, I'm actually going to read off of what I wrote, so it'll be a little bit faster. So, I came to talk to you about Children's Mental Health Week, which will be May 3rd through May 9th. We have an organization called Parent Professional Advocacy League out of Boston that has contacted several communities and community leaders, and is asking that you proclaim May 3rd through the 9th of 2020 Children's Mental Health Week in Rockland. Just to give you a little bit of background about the Parent Professional Advocacy League, it is a grassroots, family-run, statewide organization whose mission is to improve mental health and the well-being of children, youth, families through education, advocacy, and partnership with parent professionals, and parents, professionals, and professional organizations, as well as state agencies. So just a couple of quick facts about mental health in children. 20% of all youth ages 13 through 18 have a diagnosed mental health need. And 75% of all mental health needs begin before the age 24. However, there's good news. So the good news is that Massachusetts ranks first in the US for mental health coverage. So, the proclamation, where did Doug go? I don't even know where he is. There he is. Do you want me to read the proclamation, Doug?
I don't think you need to read it. The board has it in their packet. You know, it's essentially, you know, showing your support for that, recognizing it for that week. You know, I think if they have questions on it, you could certainly do it.
Okay. So, what we're going to do the week of, should you choose to adopt this week, where our plan is to put a link to PAL, that's their short name, up on the town's website. That link will go directly to their page where they'll have a list of events that are going on. There's a Facebook group called Parents Rocks, and they decorate rocks. We're going to ask them to decorate them green and with positive sayings on them. Our plan is to light up Town Hall green on May 6th. Along with the city of Boston, they'll be lighting up several several of their buildings and places, along with other social communities. We're hoping to have a Zoom seminar and parents, so parents can actually log in and ask questions about, especially during this time, their children's mental health, well-being, maybe what they should do. And then, if it's possible, we're hoping to have a virtual story so that everybody can log in, the kids can log in, and see this storyteller. That hasn't been confirmed yet, but that's our hope. So, if the board so chooses, would you choose to adopt May 3rd through the 9th, 2020, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week in the Town of Rockland?
I'll, I want to take a motion to adopt May 3rd through 9th, 2020, Children's Mental Health Awareness Week in the Town of Rockland. Okay, I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. That's unanimous. Thank you, Jean.
Jean, thank you.
Thank you.
So, do you want me to give the update now?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, the Rockland Youth Commission, since March, I think, we've, we've been doing a lot of different things, and one of the things that we've been planning for is the future, even though the future has been a little unknown, especially in recreation and youth services. But we're doing our best to plan for fall of 2020 and the winter of 2020 to 21. We actually rode around with the Easter Bunny in the Parks Department, so thank you to the Parks Department and the Police Department. We had an escort at one point, which was really exciting. One quick story about the Easter Bunny. We actually had a parent, we missed their house. They, they were actually out riding around, and they found us, and we stopped, and the dad was so excited. He screamed at the top of his lungs, "What have you found, the Easter Bunny?" So not only did the kids enjoy it, the parents did too. It was absolutely wonderful. So, we actually have started doing challenges online. So on our Facebook page, we're asking kids to, to do these different challenges, and they get a T-shirt, and they also will be entered to win a free week of ours, to our summer program. And as everyone else, we're, we're just kind of bobbing and weaving with any information that comes out to try and, and change any of the programming that we have currently plans. One thing I am working with the Rockland Cultural Council right now to make sure, we have, we had storytellers in the park planned for the month of May and June up at Hartsoft Park, which obviously is not going to happen. So we're working with the Cultural Council to keep that, and hopefully, all of the storytellers can go virtual. Or if not, then at least move them to the fall. So, that's kind of a snapshot of what we've been working on so far.
All right, Jean, I appreciate your hard work. I know these are difficult times for a park and rec department, obviously. It seems like you're doing your best to hold things together up there. I'm going to go to the rest of the board, see if any of them have any questions or comments. Mr. Penny?
So my only question is, Jean, what have you seen from participation in all the programs that you're, that you've been offering on, on virtual or online?
So, we haven't actually offered many virtual programs. Our drama program that was offered virtual, there was only about three people that attended that out of the 15 people that we had registered. So, there, there's not much participation in that. I think kids right now are really focused on schoolwork, and I think where that's going to come into play is maybe over the summer or later in the spring. But, yeah, that's kind of what we're seeing. There are, they are participating on some free programming that's been put out there, and all of the rec departments recently meeting, we, another of us, Massa, and we're all sharing information, trying to create links, and basically put up any kind of entertainment you can for the kids for now.
Thank you.
Kara?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the update.
Larry? Larry?
I'll sit up with that.
Mr. Mullin?
I know, I just want to thank you, Jean. Well, our house was one of the houses that the Easter Bunny swung by, and I like, it was oh, really just like a great outfit, you know, by you, Casey, Peter Yule. I like, it was just like a really, oh, like fun day. I mean, this is a crazy time, and you guys really helped to make it fun. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Thanks for the update. Thanks for joining us. Hopefully, hopefully you can get back out there soon and get back to video programming.
Thanks. I agree.
Thank you, Jean.
Take care. Bye.
You too. Next on the agenda, old business, COVID-19 update. Doug Laub.
Thanks, Mike. Do you, would you like, would you prefer to start with the chief, maybe? Can you have a brief update, and then he can hop up and call, and I can give the longer update after that?
Absolutely. Chief Mullin.
Good evening. Thank you. I just have a couple of really quick things. They're both kind of good news. The first one, appreciate the board's support with the Reeds Pond Park and the Hartsoft Park issues. We have seen decreased problems there with Peter Park getting the fence up and locking that. We haven't had problems with the kids in the basketball courts at Hartsoft Parks, so, you know, we do get calls occasionally gathering, but it's, it's definitely settling down, so we are getting more cooperation and really do appreciate that. And then on an even better note, I just want to let the board know, and everybody, that we, we have solved the Holy Family vandalism case, the broken windows and the messages that were left. I'm not going to go too deep into it now. Charges pending. The suspect, unfortunately, is currently seeking treatment. Once that person is done with their treatment and stuff, we will have them before the court and have them, you know, charges brought up, and, you know, I want to spend some time with Father Hickey to discuss, you know, restitution, those sort of things. So, just kind of good news that we were able to solve that pretty quickly, and again, kudos to my detective unit. They are no doubt the best around, so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions or comments for Chief Mullin? Kara?
No, great work by your team, chief.
Thank you.
Larry?
Great job, chief, as always. Hopefully, we always give you the tools you need.
You do, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mike?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much, chief. Appreciate it.
Rich?
Nice job, chief, and a great job by the detectives as usual.
As always. Thank you. I appreciate it.
John, just, just a question on, on PPE. How are you doing in that department?
You know, I hate to admit that we're doing well, because that's always kind of a death knell, but we're doing okay right now. Chief Duffy has been great in getting us what we need. Deputy Chief Veramo is unbelievable at securing stuff, so we have a little stockpile at the station. I have a tally of exactly what we have for each item, whether it's an N95, KN95, surgical mask, gloves, what type of gloves, what size, you know, down the whole list. So, we're okay right now. If this goes on a couple of months, we'll be okay. If it goes on longer than that, you know, we'll be in trouble, but the, the guys are doing a great job in reusing their masks and, you know, really protecting themselves and keeping their cruises clean.
Awesome. Thank you, chief. Appreciate your hard work. Stay safe. You and, you and the rest of you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, Doug, you want to go to Jen first, or?
I don't think she's actually going to have anything to add. Okay. She, it was about the food pantry stuff, Jen, but I think we were going to wait until a later meeting, or would you like to do that tonight?
On details, I could, I could wait. I can give just a quick update. That's helpful. So just one of the emerging issues that we're seeing with the COVID crisis is food insecurity, so people not, you know, being certain where their next meal is coming from. And we're seeing it across the Commonwealth, and I think numbers are up at the local food pantries as well. So, one of the things that we've been working with, and I want to thank Peggy Bryant from the Council on Aging, Jean Blaney, the Youth Commission, Vinnie Fontaine, Christine McGinnis from the CERT team, and the, the board from the Rockland Food Pantry, in kind of working together to develop a plan to pool resources and additional access to food, to the food pantry. So we're currently in conversations with the food, Rockland Food Pantry Director, and once we have everything ironed out, you know, I could provide that in further detail, but it seems to be coming together pretty nicely, and hopefully, we don't see an increased uptick in the numbers of the food pantries, but the trend is that way across the state, and so we just want to make sure that they're report prepared and have all the resources they need in the event that their numbers continue to increase. So, thank you. And I want to thank Suckman Mullin also for, I think he has some volunteers in queue willing to help out, so that's, that's great to hear.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, Doug?
Yeah, it is, you know, it's really wonderful how people are, you know, expanding outside their normal responsibilities to help in this time, so I want to thank Jen and all the others that she mentioned. So, real quick, what was in your packet, I just wanted to highlight, there were two documents. The first was a a list of coronavirus cases by town that the state DPH is now putting out. So we put out a Facebook post and a tweet earlier indicating that rather than the town putting out its own numbers daily, we're going to rely on the state reporting, which is coming out weekly. I believe it comes out Wednesday, Wednesday afternoons, and we had published that link. So this was last week's number. There'll be an updated one from the state tomorrow, so you can see how Rockland is faring compared to other communities. And then the other document that we included in the packet was a, a document from the AG's office with a number of FAQs, and we're not recommending that you act on any of these tonight. I just wanted to make sure that you had the information. And it was just some interesting questions about whether towns can do, you know, curfews or restrict movements of cars on the roads, or ordering in the National Guard, advisories versus orders and those types of things. So we're, we're not recommending that you implement anything that's listed on here that we haven't already done. I just wanted to make sure that you had that information. So then for my, for my update, I, I wanted to give a sort of a bigger overview just of kind of how Rockland is fitting in with other communities and where the country is at. The last information that I found from the CDC nationally is that there's nearly 750,000 cases nationwide with nearly 40,000 deaths due to COVID-19. In the state, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we have 41,199 confirmed cases and 1,961 deaths. And these are estimates. We were on a call this past weekend where there are a number of expert academics, Harvard scientists, and even an applied mathematician who spoke to all mayors and managers throughout the Commonwealth, and he actually estimated that the true number of how many people may be infected in the Commonwealth could be closer to 250,000 people. So obviously, testing is still an issue. In Rockland, we currently have 63 confirmed cases, plus an additional 18 people that have since recovered from the disease. We're all participating in lots of state and regional calls with government officials and other types of experts. Earlier today, I think, as many of you know, the governor did declare that all schools are going to be closed for the rest of the academic year. So that was obviously big news. And our health agent, Del, Delshaun, was, is looking for guidance from the state because she has some questions about certain businesses that have Plexiglas to separate the employees from the public, and she wants some clarification if their advice is that in addition to the Plexiglas, should the employees also wear a mask or not? So she is investigating that. But regardless, the state is urging everyone from the public to wear anything that covers the nose and mouth when going out in public, and to make sure to save surgical and N95 masks for first responders and healthcare workers. And we posted some very specific guidance on that on the town's Facebook page. The next thing I wanted to mention is just some of the best practices that, you know, the MMA has put out for all communities, and, and I think we've hit, you know, pretty much all the core areas in each of the different functions, and I thought I'd just quickly summarize it since we've, we've been in the weeds of this for a while now. As it relates to communications, you know, we are maintaining an online portal through the town's website that has lots of information for residents and businesses, as well as resources, outside resources, other types of links. We're using social media, our Facebook page and our Twitter page quite extensively, and we're encouraging residents to follow the town. We've also have our platform for municipal alerts, our reverse 911 system, which, which is a very effective way if there was a critical piece of information we had to get out to everyone that we could do. We have also put out a, one of the mobile traffic alert signs outside of the Highway Department barn, further putting out information, encouraging people to stay home. And we've also promoted the Commonwealth's 211 number for all non-emergency questions about coronavirus issues. So those are the communications categories. And the public health and safety level, you know, at the town level, we've declared a local state of emergency, and we've been promoting the practice of physical distancing with all kinds of guidance, as well as our, our reverse 911 call that we had done earlier. And as I just indicated, we've been urging all our residents to follow CDC and Mass DPH recommendations for face coverings. You know, while some communities are, are requiring masks in different areas, you know, other communities are not. And so at this point, based on the advice we've received and what the Board of Health is advising, we're urging everyone to do this. We're strongly advising it, but we haven't absolutely mandated it with, followed up with fines and things like that. We're also looking at, or not looking at, we're, we've implemented grab-and-go meal pickup centers and meal delivery services. Jen was just talking about one thing with the food pantry, but in addition, the school department's been doing a wonderful job with meals every day, as well as our senior center and our Veterans Agent. So we've been making a very strong effort to, to get food out to the community for those who need it. And we've also adopted a zero tolerance policy for our employees who may have any type of COVID-19 symptoms. We've been very clear to all employees that if anybody has any symptoms, they need to call their doctor and, and not come to work. Our buildings are closed. Occasionally, some people still need to come into a building to do part of their central functions, but we've made sure not to pressure people to enter a building if they have any symptoms. Regarding municipal operations, you know, we're holding our board and committee meetings virtually, just like we're doing tonight. And we've also been encouraging online payment of bills, and we also have the drop-off box at Town Hall. And our town collector, Judy Hargan, who's on this call, has always done an excellent job at, you know, working out individual payment plans for anybody that might need it. Then they actually have a category called Helping Others, and the first thing is actually something that Jen is already in the process of pursuing, which is using Local Community Preservation Act funds for an emergency housing rental assistance supplemental program. So that's something you agreed is worth exploring, so we're looking into that, and we may be following that. We've also been trying to publicize phone numbers for local domestic and sexual assault organizations and resources. The Commonwealth has a 24/7 toll-free confidential domestic violence hotline, which also includes resources and support for survivors of sexual assault. And we'll continue to push these out on social media, but I'll just read the number again. It's a telephone number, and it's 877-785-2020. And the Police Department will also be publicizing that information as well. And then lastly, under that Helping Others category, we have been working with some local companies to help donate or sell some PPE equipment to our essential frontline workers. Regarding essential services, essentially, we've been, we've been keeping them going. We've been maintaining water, sewer, and trash operations, and that's, those are critical, and those are continuing. We've also postponed our town meeting and election. You know, we're obviously hoping to reschedule those for, for sometime in late June, and we're in the process of reevaluating our budget, both the current FY20 as well as FY21. That's, that's going to be ongoing. So tho- those are some of just the major categories that all towns are doing. I thought it might be helpful to summarize sort of where Rockland is at. And then my, sort of my conclusion that I've taken from all the information I've learned from all these conference calls, and all the experts that I've heard speaking to us, is really reopening the economy requires us to know how many people are sick, which we really don't fully know right now. We need more testing, and it's just too soon to go back to normal. The social distancing has helped, but we're not in a good position to stop social distancing yet. There were some very specific questions on, on some calls just this past weekend to the medical experts that managers and and mayors were asking, and they were very clear that the answer right now at least is no. And, you know, from what they said, what, you know, what's happening in the state of Georgia right now really looks like it could very well be a mistake. Seems to be too soon, and, you know, the, the president has guidelines for reopening which require downward trajectory of symptoms and confirmed cases over a two-week period of time, and also- of symptoms and confirmed cases over a two-week period of time. And also includes hospitals ability to treat all patients without crisis care and robust testing in place for all at-risk healthcare workers. And Georgia is certainly not there yet based on the publicly available information. And certainly, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is not there yet either. I also felt I needed to say something about some of the protests that we've read about in the news and other parts of the country, and also even in parts of Massachusetts. And certainly, everyone has a right to protest. People have that right. But my opinion and my advice, I'm urging everyone is that we all need to follow the advice of the medical experts and the scientists and the governor. And the governor indicated again at his press conference today that he's focusing on managing our way through this current surge. And he does not want to open too soon, which could result in a resurgence of the disease. What all the medical experts have been telling us and all the scientists have been telling us repeatedly is that this disease has a combination of both higher rates of transmission and greater severity of illness, unlike anything else we've seen before. And they've used the words, the word unprecedented. They've indicated us that it could be with us for multiple years, but if we're smart about how we react now, the future outbreaks will be weaker over time and ultimately will end. But again, we need to be really smart right now. So the bottom line they've told us is, is they need, we need to test, trace, isolate and support. And I was on a call earlier today with Jen and Del Shawn with the state's new initiative called the Community Tracing Collaborative, where they're going to be unveiling a much larger initiative to do just that, help test, trace, isolate and support. So for now, we just need to stay the course. I just thought it would be helpful again to have my sort of big picture on where the town sits. And with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Doug. I don't know where I left off. Mr. Ryan.
Good. Good report. Everything. Yeah, we got to do what we got to do.
Mr. Mullin?
No, I just want to say, oh, Doug, you just and gave a phenomenal presentation. You, you know, you have a face made for the news media too. Oh, if this whole town administrator thing doesn't work out, but it's working out very good. So thank you.
A face for radio. That's what they say.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Penny.
No questions, but Doug, very, very nice presentation, very detailed. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Naim?
No questions. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, again, you know, thanks, Doug. I appreciate you staying on top of it. I mean, you and I talked, you know, multiple times throughout the course of the week. You know, I couldn't imagine, you know, everybody seems to be under the impression that working from home is a, is an easy thing to do or it's some kind of a vacation. But, you know, every time I call you, you're heading into another meeting from home, or, you know, you're, you're watching another press conference or you're on a conference call. So, you know, to Mike's point, you know, you're doing a very good job at, at the job that, you know, we're looking for you to do. And you just keep, keep doing it. You know, this is the new normal. And for as long as that's the case, you know, this is, this is what we got to do. And I appreciate the updates and the constant communication.
No, I appreciate all of you saying that. And it goes without saying, you know, I'm the one that just gave the update, but it truly is a team effort. And all these calls I'm on are with all, you know, Jen and Biz and Judy and John and Deb and the list, the list goes on deli. So it's, it's a team effort. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Next on the agenda, continued discussion of local options to extend due dates of real and personal property tackles and waiver of interest on certain late payments.
If I could start with an intro, Mike, if that's helpful. Great. So the last meeting, I know we talked about it quite extensively. And I know there was a, a lot of discussion about the federal stimulus checks and if they were coming. And if so, you know, how much of an impact that would make. The checks have obviously started to come. So that's good news. My assumption is that I think you'd still like to talk about this, just, you know, despite the fact that the stimulus checks are out and I see them out of your head. So I'll, I'll keep going. What's in your packet, I thought would be important to highlight. The first thing was a Department of Revenue Local Services FAQ document. And the timing of this was really perfect. We, all the cities and towns have been clamoring for this for a while. So it gave a lot of good detail about, you know, answering a number of the questions that cities and towns had about how to implement any of these options. The next document was something I printed from a Google sheet that was made available to me from the MMA. There was a survey of all 351 cities and towns regarding who's doing what with these local options. So you have to take it with a grain of salt though, in that what's reported here is accurate, but, but the reporting is incomplete. There's a lot of towns that are doing things that have not reported on this, including some of our neighboring communities. So this is not comprehensive, but at least you get a flavor of some of the towns are no, some of the towns are yes. And anecdotally, what I've heard, you know, there's other towns that are waiting until after May 1 before they're, before they're going to make any, any final decisions. And then lastly, what we put in is a document that Biz and Judy put together because we were pushing them pretty hard to try to help us quantify and estimate. And I want to stress that, you know, these are estimates, what the financial impact could be, what the maximum exposure could be for these options. The, the original document that I had sent to you last week had, if you look at the yellow highlighted number on the lower right-hand corner, and I'm only going to focus on the, the one option that you guys had spoken about earlier, which was waiving penalties and interest. That was estimated at $103,000 maximum exposure. And these are my words. I think, you know, Biz and Judy might characterize it a little differently. I think an important point to note here is originally anecdotally, we were talking about, oh, around 80% of taxes are, are escrowed, you know, through people's mortgages with their banks. And upon really analyzing that data more closely, what, what Judy calculated was it was really closer to 60%. So that, that changes the dynamics. Instead of 80% of this automatically coming in from the bank, the money's already there. It's actually only 60. So that leaves a much larger chunk that's potentially, you know, available to this. The updated document, which I emailed you guys just a couple of hours ago. So I don't even know if you've all had a chance to see it. It's the exact same document. It just has updated numbers from newer receipts, newer tax collections coming in. So it's essentially just more actual data that's populating the spreadsheet. It's the same methodology and that same essentially 50, excuse me, 59 or 60% that's being paid through the banks, just more actual data. So that dropped that fiscal impact from 103,000 down to a little over $69,000. So again, the DOR FAQ, you know, highlight, gives some, some Q and As about it. Some towns are doing it. Some towns are not. Some towns aren't even really talking about it. It's an option. It's not a requirement. I know we talked about it extensively before. But I think generally that summarizes the information we have for you. And certainly Biz and Judy and John and Deb can, or Jen can chime in if you have more specific questions about the spreadsheet or any of the mechanics about it.
Okay. Judy, I'm going to go to you first.
Okay. Um, as Doug mentioned, we've been doing some pretty extensive work on this. I pulled all the receipts back from February to get a definitive of the escrow number rather than just utilize an estimate. And it does come closer to the 60% mark. That being said, the numbers that we've been working with, Biz and I have been repeatedly rerunning the numbers because as we both maintain, it's, it's a moving target. Receipts are coming in as we speak. The report that you see now is going to change tomorrow on, when, on Monday, we received our big $4 million escrow payment. So that, that made the number be reduced dramatically. Today, we've got two more escrow payments in. The, um, the traffic in the box and online has been steady and pretty, pretty consensus is that most people are, are, are going with the May 1 due date. I expect the next, the last escrow payment to come in tomorrow from Wells Fargo. So that will, that will make that number even less. One of the things that I wanted to address, which I thought was really interesting, it was an article in the Patriot Ledger that Doug had shared, talking about what each different town is doing. And it certainly speaks to the fact that every town, every town is doing something that, that is indicative of what their needs are to be met. And so everybody is, is taking this as an individual thing, as an individual option and, and seeing how it fits in their own revenue and their own budget. One of the things that a few towns have done is they've adopted both. Some towns have adopted to push back the May 1 property tax deadline to June 1. I particularly noticed that two towns, Marshfield and, and I believe it's Hanover, have adopted something which I, I thought was very interesting. They moved, instead of moving the deadline for all residents to empower the treasurer, in this case, they have a treasurer collector. So it would be the collector who waived penalties and interest for late payments by those who can prove financial hardship as a result of the coronavirus pandemic. The board also voted a 30-day grace period from interest for late payments for those who cannot prove a hardship. Similarly, Norwell is doing something that is in, in line with Marshfield and that they have adopted to take up measures to waive penalties after May 1 property tax deadline. Their select board noted that many banks and other companies have been calling the town, asking if the payment deadline has been extended so they can keep tax payments longer. Quote, "My concern is I don't want to create an incentive for the withholding money in escrow to not forward it to the town." That was from the, I believe, the town administrator for Norwell. So the decision really is, is up to the board. You have the numbers. The, the, the payments are coming in and the big payments are, are already in. So it's, um, it, it kind of would be up to you as a board to determine which route you would like to take with you. Just would prefer to stay the course. Would you rather push the due date out to June 1 or waive the interest piece? And again, like I said last two weeks ago, things have changed dramatically, fiscally. And I will be amenable to anything that the board chooses to, to put in place. I will have Biz speak to the, the more detailed report that she pulled together so that she can elaborate on the numbers better than I.
Thank you, Judy. Biz, you're up.
Okay, sorry about that. What we did on this report is we took Judy's actual figures on the projections that she made, where is having the bill extended to June 1st or the local option interest and penalties waived until June 29th. And like Doug said earlier, the value was 103,000 on lost penalties and interest or interest only. And when we received in the $4 million we got this week, it drops us down to 69,000 versus 100,000. The cash flow aspect of it is something that we want to keep in mind as well. This will chronically change. Every time we receive a payment, it will go down a little bit more. It shouldn't go up. It should go down. But when you have, it's hard to guess. Last year, we had about 500,000 uncollected tax revenue at the end of the fiscal year. So it could be anything 500 and above this year that we don't receive in tax before the end of the, the year. If we have a double issue where as many people can't pay off their tax bill in time, then our, our tax collection could be closer to 750 to a million dollars less than what we would normally have at the end of the year that we will have to collect next year. The loss of interest is not as high as it was in the beginning due to all the, the work we've been doing to keep on top of it. This decision, it's a tough decision for all of you to make. And financially, just look at the whole big picture because everything's a big picture. So, any questions?
Mike, can I make one other comment?
Yep.
And I think what Biz is alluding to, and I'll just say it out loud, is just that, you know, we're in a big hole and we're in the process of calculating what we think the deficit is, that we're going to need to close an FY20. But our projections right now are very big. And so I think, I think the issue is under, you know, normal times. And I suppose we wouldn't be having this discussion if it was a normal time. It might be something that we could absorb. But I think that concern that we all have is, while it's a very understandable thing to look at, and I can understand it from the taxpayer's perspective, our issue is just whatever, if we decide to do this, it's just going to make the, the hole that we have to cover through cuts, furloughs, layoffs, use of stabilization fund, et cetera. You know, that much bigger. That's just the issue. Thanks.
Okay. Is there anybody else on the son of member of the board that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, hearing none, I'll go to the board. Mr. Ryan?
I'm a firm believer that we stay the course. Small towns like Rockland don't really make at the end from all the, all the much fight is I, I've been through this before where they, you know, they cut a lot of money and and other towns got much bigger bailouts than we did. I, I don't think that we need to put the town in any more jeopardy. It's already in. I, I, if we stay the course, it's our best option because it just, you know, we, we don't want to get any further behind. Catching up is hard enough to do. And if we allow ourselves to delay payments and, you know, just, I, I think let the financial team do what they want to do and run it the way they want to run it. And we'll see where, where, where we end up. We've got a long way to, a big hole to climb out of. And, and, you know, let's not just, you know, throw a few more scoops out of the hole so we get that much further to climb. Let's just stay where we are and, and, and collect the money we're supposed to collect and, and all the penalties, blah, blah, blah to go with it. You know, it's, but you know, something, our job is to think about the entire and, and it's, it's life. And, and that's what we have to do. We have to think in terms, the state will come up with bailouts for the people. Fed will come out with bailout for the people that are already we don't need, we don't need to throw money at them. We need just to stay the course, money that's ours and do what we have to do with. And I think that way we'll be on our way to recovery. That's it.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Mullin?
Um, I, um, I tend to agree. And I, I honestly really appreciate that every, oh, that everything that Biz said and Doug said about this issue. I mean, oh, when you look at the bottom line and you're looking at, oh, like a $65,000 variance, uh, um, in terms of the impact we're talking about here, oh, you know, I mean, oh, like in face value, $65,000, that seems like a, I will feel a small number, but that is, oh, you know, one of our employees' jobs on the line. It's also, I mean, when you're looking at all the parts of revenues that, like, I'm sure, you know, that Biz and Doug are looking at to try to bring the whole picture together. Uh, you know, that's a big chunk of change when you're talking about, oh, you know, any, oh, any potential, I'll figure number that, oh, you know, oh, you know, that we're looking at. So, you know, like, like I would say, stay the course. I, I, and I think Larry mentioned- Oh, and I think Larry mentioned, it's, like, it's easy to look at what, you know, like, other communities around us are really doing, but there really isn't, like, an apples to apples way to look at this. It's really making a decision that's really based on Rockland's financial situation. Oh, you know, that's based on what our receipts have been. Historically, it's based on our revenues. It's based on, frankly, the balance we have in our stabilization account. And I think, as Larry mentioned, you know, the best, oh, like, and I think prudent course right now is to stay the course, and, you know, to make sure the folks that we've hired, you know, to make recommendations, they have all the tools available to them in terms of revenues on this. So, like, I would recommend, you know, that we stay the course at this point.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Penny?
Thanks, Mike. So, a couple of things. Big picture. So, the big picture really is that unless there is a federal bailout, both state and local municipalities are looking at years of struggle. So, that's the reality of what we face. So, lost revenues from a state perspective, lost revenues from a local perspective. So, that's the big picture, what we're all facing. And what we don't know is what's going to happen. But I do know that if the feds do not do a bailout, that this economy will, doesn't matter what they do for individuals or what they do for businesses, this economy will crash and burn. So, they're going to have to do something. The other part of this, and Judy, I thought that example in Hanover was great. So, my concern, this is those individuals who are impacted because of this coronavirus. Right? Individuals that, other than being impacted because of this, would be able to make their payments. So, Doug, yes, the stimulus checks have started to go out roughly at this point. About 90 million of the 140 million individuals who are receiving a stimulus check have got it. So, that still leaves 50 million people that are still waiting. They don't know when they're going to get it. So, there's been estimates that it could be another four to six weeks, particularly for those individuals that are waiting for a check. The unemployment system started to finally get some checks out in Week 2, they didn't into glitches. So, that extra $600 payment, we're missing in a whole lot of people's checks. So, and there's still a lot of individuals who haven't been able to get through. So, there are those that are waiting for unemployment checks that aren't getting it, that aren't working. These are the people that I'm concerned about. The final part is the small business, which this town is made up of all small business owners. I know quite a few that have put in applications, and at this point, the fund ran dry. They didn't get any money. So, you know, while you're seeing some of these national chains that got 20 million and $10 million, the actual people that are in this town didn't get it. Hopefully, today, I believe it passed that there's going to be some more money going into that. So, those are the three buckets they look at that I'm concerned about. And when we look at this from a revenue perspective, this is revenue that is really falling on those that can't make a payment, or potentially on those that can't make a payment. Not that they don't want to, they just, they can't. At this point, at 69,000, we're down to under 1/10th of 1% of our overall budget, okay? And I'm not saying $69,000 is nothing to sneeze at. Also, you know, as we get more and more payments, that number is going to continue to shrink. And that's only if those people don't make that payment by May 1, right? Now, if they make the payment on May 3, that number shrinks again. So, at the end of the day, the dollars that we're actually talking about could be 30,000, 40,000, but it's people that potentially are impacted. So, what I would propose is, what I don't want to do is make this to individuals that just say, hey, you know what? I get two more months and I'm not going to make the payment. But I would like to at least discuss something similar to what Hanover did, where if an individual can show a hardship due to loss in coronavirus, those individuals should not get penalized. They shouldn't, you know, at least in my opinion, so.
Thank you, Rich. Carol?
I'd have to agree with my colleagues, and I'm with Rich on this one. I kind of like the idea of if, you know, residents can prove that they have a financial hardship, that we should work with them and not penalize them. That's just my thought on the issue.
Thank you, Carol. So, Judy, are you still with us?
I am. I didn't want to interrupt, but I am, I am still here. And I wanted to address a couple of things that you guys have mentioned that we're already doing in order to relieve the burden on the taxpayer. We've stopped, as I spoke two weeks ago, we've stopped the demand process. So, you have to factor in that $20 for every late bill is now out the door for motor vehicle excise right now. That would hold true. Demands for the, typically, for the real estate bills typically go out anywhere between, I'm going to say May 15 and May 20, yeah, May 20. It's another $20 on a delinquent real estate bill. All of those are being waived. There's no movement to putting demands on any of these bills because of the fact of exactly what Rich is saying. You have to, you have to take into account that there, while the town has a fiduciary responsibility, as a collector, you also have some leeway to be able to utilize when you put a demand on a bill, when you cannot waive interest. And the other big picture is, I've already had a number of people calling to ask about a payment plan. I've set up at least 15 so far within the last, I would say, three days. The other issue that I think is the bigger picture that we need to look at too, is a large part of our population are retirees. They're probably not getting stimulus checks. They're retired. They're paying their real estate bills. They're calling me, they're old-time families, they're paying their bills. And they're also, a couple of them are starting to ask about the benefit of the exemption. When Deb did her presentation two weeks ago, I think it enlightened a lot of people. Wow, there is help out there, and I can, maybe I'll qualify, so I'll put in an application. It wouldn't hurt. So, that we are moving forward with avenues of certainly making a valiant attempt at keeping the town fiduciary. I'm going to quote from Hanover. "It's on point, you have a fiduciary duty to the town, and we would not be keeping that up if we move tax payment deadline out." And this was from Hanover. So, our accompanying towns are in the same boat, but are taking different measures. Personally, we're taking some pretty significant measures to help ease the burden on people if, in fact, they can't make a May 1 deadline. We've actually been that way right along. As I mentioned two weeks ago, we do have an eight-day grace period, which is kind of unheard of for a town. Interest does not start until May 8. At that point, you know, then the interest will start to accrue. We've also seen an uptick, a huge uptick in refinancing. People are taking full advantage of the fact that our municipal lien certificates went through the roof. We have, we must, what we usually average 20 a month, we're probably doing that in a day, and they're all refi'd. People are taking advantage of the interest rate, and they're refinancing, and they're taking advantage of the economy that isn't so, isn't so great right now. So, there's a lot of factors that are coming into all of this. But the one thing that I do want to promote significantly is that we will work with anyone. We will talk and have discourse and work with any resident that has any issue paying their last quarter tax bill. I think the reason why, just to go back, Hall adopted the, to kick out the tax bill as well as the interest, but when you look at Hall, they have an 80% escrow coming in. So, it's, like Mike was saying, you can't compare apples to apples. One town is not the same as another. So, I just wanted to kind of put it out there that the iCloud, our MCC online support group has been phenomenal. They're working with people, people are paying their bills online. They're utilizing what could potentially be a lower-rate credit card to pay it versus a 14% hit at the end of your real estate bill. So, we are, there is definitely an uptick on our online payments. So, that being said, I am, we're doing what we can do with the capabilities that we have. But as Biz was saying, looking at the bigger picture, it's a tough call.
Thank you, Judy. So, you know, I think I came into this meeting, and I know last week I had one thought process, and came into this meeting with similar thought process. I'm in agreement with Rich and Cara on this one, with what the town of Hanover is doing, and only for the one reason, and it's because we have Judy Hardigan as our collector. Judy has always been, you know, one of the most compassionate people, and I know that Judy is a hard worker and willing to really reach out to the public and assess their needs and their abilities, whether it's actually based on events relative to the COVID-19 virus. So, you know, I think at this point, I entertain a motion, whatever motion the board would like to make. I think in something along the lines of staying the course and authorizing the collector to waive any interest and penalties for somebody that can prove hardship as a result of the COVID-19 virus.
Mike, yeah. So, I would, what I would like to motion is that the due date of May 1 remains the same. It does not change in that under discretion of the tax collector on proof by the resident that they have lost income and have a hardship due to Corona-19, that we would waive penalties and interest through June 20. If you cannot prove hardship, then interest starts accruing, Judy, what, the May 8 date?
May 8, yep.
That would be my motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Just a quick question. Like, are we talking about just personal property? Are we talking about just personal property? Are we talking about, what are we talking about here?
Real estate taxes, property taxes.
Real estate.
Yep.
Real estate and personal property.
Yes, real estate and personal property.
Okay.
Do I have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
I'd second that. I think it's reasonable. I think, like, it keeps, you know, our revenue situation, like, as tight as it could go. I honestly don't see a whole lot changing from what, and how Judy's already working with people.
Absolutely.
We agree.
And...
I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
And, you know, based on that, I would, you know, I mean, we're talking, you know, we're not waiving everybody. We're just really waiving the people who can really prove something. And those people, those, like, I'm sure the people who actually really have an issue, a lot of them have already really been thinking about this, and arguably have already, and, you know, they've been in touch with Judy, or they're thinking about getting into Judy in the first place, so.
I just have a question on the motion. Rich, to clarify, the towns that we're talking about are giving us the 30-day grace period to push it out to, from May 1 to June 1. You mentioned June 29 as your motion.
So, I thought through the state legislation that it had to go through June 29? Am I incorrect on that?
For it to be considered late, I believe.
Yeah. Can we get a clarification on that?
Yeah, Biz, you might want to chime in, because I think there's two separate things there. When you're talking the June 29 date, you're now including motor vehicle excise.
Okay, no, all right.
So, June 1?
So, what you just...
To June 29, you've now got your old motor vehicle bills, as well as your real estate and your personal property. So, it's a whole bigger ball of wax, which is why I think the three towns of Norwell, Marshfield, and Hanover have decided on the 30-day grace period for strictly real estate and personal property, which would bring it out to June 1.
So, that's, all right, that's what I would rather do, but, all right, then I was mistaken on what was in the legislation. I thought it had to go to June 29, but I would amend my motion to the 30-day grace period and just be for real estate and personal property.
Okay, so, Mike, do I still have your second on that?
Yeah, yeah. Like, did Biz have anything she wanted to add as well? I think she might have looked like...
It's just that the date of the 29th, you have the two different options. One would be extend the bill to June 1, the local option of the interest and penalties to June 29, or the third option, which would be leave status quo, authorize Judy to work with any and all residents and taxpayers who need assistance and may need hardship, waiving of penalties and fees.
That would be the option.
Okay, so, it's the last option.
The last one would only be for hardships and the 30-day. Yep.
Right, so, status quo, leaving it in Judy's hands to deal with the taxpayers as necessary. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself, that is yes. Judy is in your hands. You have the complete trust and support of the board.
Thank you, you guys. I know it was a tough decision, and it will be treated, as I said, much the same way we treat taxpayers. Each resident is an individual, and we'll never look at it other than that. And so, I thank you for making this decision. It's, I think it's the best one for everyone involved, truthfully, residents and the town. And we promise to stay the course ourselves and make things moving and keep our revenues flowing and keep the money coming in the door. So, thank you.
Judy, between you and Doug tomorrow, could you guys put something together, or Doug put something together, to put it out to the residents, to make them aware that if they're having difficulty paying these bills on time, that they can reach out to Judy Hardigan's office? Judy, email, phone call, what's your preference?
Either way, taxcollector@rocklandmills.gov, or call direct line. Email is probably preferred, because then you have a paper trail of correspondence that you have with residents. But both and probably the website.
Okay, awesome. Sounds great. So, Doug, when you send that out in the morning, just if everybody could try to share it and get it out there to the residents, that'd be great. Okay, all right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So Doug, we covered, uh, the town election update and the special annual town meeting update.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add on that, you know, we're gonna have the, the town clerk come in at the next meeting to talk about issues regarding trying to schedule the election. And just regarding town meeting, there, just an interesting date that I was just made aware of today. One of the items that was, uh, is planned to be on the warrant for town meeting is to update, uh, some of the maps for the flood insurance, the FEMA firm maps, for the town to be able to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So we, we just got documentation from, uh, the feds that despite everything that's happening with the pandemic and the states of emergency, et cetera, they're still not, um, waiving the need for local adoption of these maps by, by a date certain. And that if we don't have it, we'll get kicked out of the program. So it looks like the date that I believe, it was just a very quick look at the letter, uh, was July twenty second. So again, we're hoping we're gonna have town meeting in June. If, you know, if we're, for whatever reason, if things really go south and we just can't have our town meeting before July twenty second, I'm sure there are appeal provisions where we could make a hardship appeal and, you know, our best, but I, I just thought I'd mention that, you know, the state's coming up with clarification for one twelve budgets and things like that to let us go if we have to go past June thirtieth, but this is like a new, a new deadline. So just thought I'd mention that, but, um, no, no other update at this time.
All right, Doug. Okay, FY twenty, FY twenty one budget?
Again, no, no numbers today. We started talking about this, uh, I shouldn't say started, we continued to talk about this again later this afternoon with a number of us on a Zoom call. And, uh, I think Biz thought I was starting to have a heart attack and was dropping off a Zoom call because the, uh, the numbers are, you know, not looking good. But I, again, I, I want to wait till we have a little bit more hard data to share. Every call that I'm at with all the other towns and the state, every town's doing the same thing. They're just hammering the state to try to understand, what are you gonna do with, you know, with state aid? What do you, you know, and, and they, you know, they just don't know yet. As I think I indicated earlier, the state is gonna come out with an FAQ that's gonna provide some of the details on greater flexibility for use of free cash and some of the details on exactly how to do the one twelve budget and the amortizing deficits over a multi-year period. But it's clear that, you know, in the current year, we're gonna be in a significant hole. And when I say significant, on the low end, it's many hundreds of thousands of dollars, and on the high end, orders of magnitude above that. So we're just, we're tracking revenues. And now that we got through this, this question about the local option for taxes, now we're gonna move on to the next phase, which is really further tracking where we're at, and, and we'll be following up as soon as we have some more definitive numbers, and we'll, we're gonna recommend all the appropriate actions that we're gonna have to take to, to get us in balance.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, town administrators, report and correspondence.
See, I did have a couple of things. We talked about it a little bit earlier. Again, I just want to thank staff for continuing to work remotely and adapt. You know, Gene talked about some of the things they're doing with the youth commission, and Jen was talking about some of the efforts with the food pantry. Other things are still happening too. We just completed some emergency repairs at the library. Some folks may have seen there was exterior kind of civil engineering, this Public Works construction going on, where we had to do quite a bit of excavation and then masonry and drywall work, because the problem we were having was water infiltration into the basement. So that was one of those things that we just couldn't, we could not freeze that spending because we'd end up causing more damage to the library at greater cost to repair later. So Jen took the lead on that and, and that work is now, uh, complete. As I indicated at the prior meeting, Highway Department is, uh, gonna be proceeding with certain roadwork projects that are already funded through things like Chapter ninety or the road bond. Um, and he's gonna make sure that, you know, the town staff as well as contractors are all in compliance with the COVID nineteen, uh, DPH requirements. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, and it kind of relates to the budget, but it's also just part of my general report. You know, the, the school department recently had a, a number of furloughs that they voted at their school committee meeting, and I know there was some questions in the community about, about that, about why there was a need for it since, you know, town taxpayers have already funded the budget through the general fund. And I just wanted to help clarify that, uh, the limited actions that the, that the school department took with their furloughs were, were limited to their revolving funds. Their, the school department has a much larger budget than the general government, and they're also much more heavily reliant on revolving funds for things like before school programs, after school programs, daycare, and facility rentals. So with the, with the stay at home orders and, and the shutdown, it was really having a devastating impact on those revolving funds. And so that's why, uh, they had to take those actions and, you know, they did the right thing. They did what they had to do, but those were not, uh, general fund budgeted positions, you know. So I, I know there's been some question about why there was a need for that, and I just wanted to highlight that it's because those were revolving funds and that similarly, the town, uh, on our side, we're, we're not as heavily dependent on revolving funds like the school budget is. While we do have the special revenue funds, you know, like water, sewer, trash, we are bringing in receipts and we're monitoring those closely to make sure that we stay afloat. But that's, that's why that was taken and, and why it's different from the general funds. So I hope that's helpful, and that's all I had for a report tonight.
All right, Doug, just for, just a little bit further, uh, clarification, can you just tell the general public what exactly, just for those that don't know, that have been asking some questions, what exactly a revolving fund is?
I mean, Biz can probably give a better, uh, strict definition, but I'll, I'll give a layman's, you know, definition, which is just, you know, the general fund is people pay taxes, it goes into the town's bank account, general fund, and it funds all our sort of regular operations. A revolving fund is where you pay a fee for some type of service, a program fee. You're gonna pay a fee to send your child to a preschool program or a daycare program or an after school program. So you pay a fee. That fee goes into a separate account and, and that, those funds are used to pay the expenses of that program. So it's like a little mini business and it needs to be self-sufficient and pay for itself. So if with everybody staying at home, they're not sending their kids to these programs or they're not renting out the buildings, those fees, the, the income, revenue doesn't come into that fund, there's no way to pay the employees for it. That's different for, you know, Biz and Jen and I, who are on this call tonight, where we have taxes that are going into the general fund and continuing to pay our salaries and, and all our police and fire and all our other operations. So that's my layman's, uh, definition. Biz can give a more technical one.
I think that, I think that was pretty good. Biz, how do you do?
He did great. I couldn't have said it any better.
Perfect, good. Very good. All right, uh, on to number seven, selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen. Now, the opinions and comments of only the individual member, Mr. Mullen. You're on mute, Mike. You're on mute.
This is working better.
Oh my god. This is, this is, this, that was literally the greatest thing I've ever.
Tell me Larry line, but.
I've always wanted a mute button to you, Mike.
Funny guy. You go back to respawn. Uh, but anyways, um, I just want to, and I just want to like say seriously, it's, um, oh, you know, these are crazy, crazy, crazy times and, um, oh, you know, oh, like all of us, I mean, all, all of us where we're at, where our families are at, uh, you know, I mean, and, and, you know, we're going through the same thing in our lives with our jobs, with our families that, oh, like all Rockland residents are. And, um, oh, you know, like it's stressful, it is, oh, like it's overwhelming, uh, like it causes all of us a whole ton of anxiety. Um, uh, you know, like if we don't, um, I have a family member, uh, like a neighbor who has, uh, who has, uh, come down with, uh, you know, with the coronavirus, we know of, you know, or someone who has, and it's just, oh, you know, like if, and, and, you know, really not to sound cliche, uh, but right now we, God, we're truly all in this together. And, um, and together, I like is really, and, and really gonna be the only way we come out of it. And I think, you know, like, I can, I, oh, I can, I can't say enough about what, uh, um, is happening in Rockland right now with the people who Rockland has working for it. Uh, you know, I was actually, uh, you know, on the phone with another local town administrator the other day. Um, and, and, you know, like he commented to me, um, how impressed, uh, you know, and how, oh, oh, you know, and how progressive our administration of Rockland has been, um, and addressing, uh, you know, this whole, oh, you know, this whole pandemic, like in working with our residents, and I just, like, as hard as it is, it's oh, like it's heartbreaking every day is, oh, like in so many aspects. I just really hope, uh, you know, people at home know, uh, that we really have an incredible team and, you know, town working for us and working for them. And, um, and I just really want to thank everyone who and, and, you know, really who's been involved in those efforts. It's like it's everything, and these are just such crazy times. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Ms. Nyman?
Um, I also want to thank everyone for their hard work during the fall time, especially the town departments and the residents who came out, um, two weeks ago for Walter Quackenbush's funeral procession. It was really an amazing tribute, so I just want to thank everyone who was involved for that.
Thank you, Kara. Mr. Penny?
So with the, uh, the announcement today by Governor Baker, effectively closing the, uh, school year, I want to say, um, that, uh, I'm sorry for this class and, and how they had to go out. This class came into the world, uh, in a, in a crazy time, uh, and unfortunately during their senior year, which is, should be the, the best year of, of, uh, your twelve years or thirteen years in school. Unfortunately, their last three, four months have been, uh, have been terrible, you know, missing their prom, missing their friends, uh, different, uh, plays, you know, sports, the whole thing. I hope that at some point in time, uh, this summer, things get to the point where they actually can have some type of a, uh, a ceremony or a graduation, but, uh, my hat's off to them and I wish them all the best luck. Uh, also, I want to thank you to all the first responders who every day are putting themselves into, uh, into a hazardous, uh, situation. I really appreciate everything they do for us.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Ryan?
I just want to take the time again to thank not only our, but everybody who's been showing up to work, the fire department, police department, the highway guys. You know, I, I worked in medicine for fifty years, and so I know what it's like to be on the front lines. And, uh, and, and not maybe nothing like this, but, you know, I can remember working two or three days straight sometimes when I was a young guy. And, um, it's, it's, it's very, uh, can be very stressful. So thinking that you're gonna bring the disease home to your family and I got, uh, my son Matt, uh, nursing, he's in charge, he's in nursing charge, and, you know, they have a lot of problems there. My granddaughter works at a nursing facility and they got problems there all across the Rockland and nursing facilities where we store, uh, uh, poor people, elderly people, that they could be taken care of and, uh, and I want to say it's a, a death trap, but it's, it's just an unfortunate circumstance. Larry Chaffey, Blackwood Chaffey, he's up in, on, uh, in a nursing home and so he, right now he's safe and I'm his healthcare proxy and I'm on the phone with him making sure that everything is going smoothly and, and as best as can be, uh, without any, for us, but it, it, it's very difficult. People are starting to stress out and, you know, I noticed on Facebook, a lot of people are really angry and, uh, you know, something. You're gonna have to bite off that anger and, um, make the best decisions for you and your family. But it's, it's very difficult. I, I don't envy anybody who has to be out there working, and I don't envy any of those who have to stay home while their job's going down the drain. Retired fellows, so it's not gonna affect me in, in financially in those ways, but I, I, I look at the paper, I read the, I listen to the BBC, it's, the, the issues going all the way around the world and it's a completely devastating thing. And, and for the people to think that we can just go back and, and they're gonna open the door and the world is gonna go back to normal, it's not. And, and it's gonna be a while before any of that comes to fruition and, and try to, try to be patient. I, it's, it's very difficult to sit here at home and, you know, wonder what it's like to be out there. And, you know, I'm an old guy, I can sit here and hide, I don't have to go out and do anything. But for those people who have to, they and, and risk the disease or bringing it home to your family, it's, hey, it's not, it's not gonna be easy. So stay a distance until the governor says it's better to, you know, it's all right to open limited D and, and just keep that social distancing thing in, in, in order so that, um, we don't have to transfer it unnecessarily. Be safe, everyone. It's, um, very, very difficult and I wish there was an answer that we could all fuck, it's gonna be better, but, you know, I, I, here's a guy of me, I've been in politics here since ninety six and finally figured that the town is in great shape and life is gonna be good and, and, you know, everything's gonna be hunky dory and bang, here we are. So this is Griffin Barrett, do the best we can with what we get the worst. Pay attention to social distancing and, and, um, if you want to protest, stay ten feet apart and protest. And the, the need to defend our rights as individual U.S. citizens, but, um, I, I, Mike, my thing, I see on Facebook, everybody wants to open it up, I said, well, who's gonna be the first person who says, I'm glad they opened up, even though my child or my mother or my father or some relative of mine had to pass away for it. First person to say, oh, well, that's the way it goes. So so be patient. Be restrictive. Care for each other. God, I see so much hatred out there and it's really, really, that's, that to me is scarier than the disease. That we're gonna have so much hatred left, go, it's done. So, soap opera, they're soap operas, I guess. Anyway, fuck everyone, hang tough.
Well, uh, Larry, thank you. That was, uh, that was, that was great, very well said. So I, I haven't got, I haven't got much tonight, uh, not anything really that hasn't already been said by, by the other members of the board. Just continue to follow the direction of the governor and, and the CDC. You know, socially distance yourself, you know, I mean, I, I'm in a business where, you know, we're, we're considered essential employees. And, and I'm seeing people out there every day, and I'm seeing people out there not, not abiding by the social distancing, distancing guidelines. And, um, you know, whether you believe in this disease or not, it, it, it's real, it's, it's here in Rockland. You know, it, it's, we're, we're not through this yet, and, and it's not something that's gonna happen at the snap of fingers. You know, like Larry said, you can't just open things up right now, uh, where we haven't seen the worst yet, I, I don't think anyway. And, you know, I, I see it every day and, and I see the, hear the complaints about, you know, you know, sacrificing liberty for, for security, and, and I get that. But, you know, there, there's a social contract, well, responsibility to, to your fellow man and, and woman to ensure that, you know, you, you don't get them sick, you know, if there's something going on, uh, in the world that you can prevent, you know, illness of another person. And it's everyone's responsibility as members of society to do so. And with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn to executive session for the purpose number six disposition of real property assessors possible three dash one A. Mr. Ryan, oh, do I have a motion first?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Kara?
Yes, sorry.
The agreement. Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you, Rockland. Be safe, stay healthy.